The Village of Ryan Beck. I call the Village of Ryan Beck Planning Board Meeting for October 19th, 2021 to order. The first item on the agenda is AT&amp;T Mobility. The Eddie to the tower at the fairgrounds. And are they here?
Yes.
There's Mark Fuentes.
Yes, I'm here.
So we haven't gotten anything from legal. We got some letters. Specifying it's it's under 20 feet. It's 14 feet, which is within the FCC substantial threshold. Is on the board or Brandy have any comments?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. I'm Brandy Nelson with Thai and Bond. Mr. Fuentes, we had talked at the last meeting about getting a plan that actually showed that dimension from the existing antenna to the new antenna so that that is actually physically documented on the plan. That that will be part of Mr. Dowden's record in the building department. And is there some reason why you weren't able to get that to us ahead of tonight's meeting?
I don't have a good excuse why it wasn't submitted. I requested it, but I didn't receive the plans in time. So I will. I've talked to our coordinator. She's on board of getting that all that information on there. Is there anything else that needs to be changed on the plans? Or is it just that?
That was the only item that we had for purposes of site plan. Separately, we're reviewing the completeness of the structural evaluation for the foundation of the tower to sustain the extension of the tower, but that's something we'll work with Mr. Dowden on a building permit.
Okay.
So, Mr. Chair, oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Chair, the liaison to our board would like to speak. She has her hand raised.
I do, and I was having a hard time finding my unmute button. Thank you. So I just wanted to mention that, you know, I fully appreciate that the FCC has guided how these applications go and that for the, you know, ease of the industry, it makes sense that there's a uniform set of rules across the country. But I must admit that the process for this particular village with this particular, you know, permit application has been frustrating. And Mr. Fuentes, I don't know, you know, if this is you or just sort of your company or, you know, with the state of work these days with everybody a little shorthanded. But, you know, our interactions with you have been nothing more than pro forma. And that's disappointing, to be perfectly honest. I mean, all of these cell phone towers exist in small communities. And and I look forward to the FCC and the federal government taking that into account the next time there is an opportunity to regulate the industry. And I do plan on sharing with both our congressman and our senator how this experience has gone for the Village of Ryan Beck.
Okay, this is direction from AT&amp;T, so.
No, I appreciate that. Yeah, no, no. Yeah, I appreciate that. I mean, the industry sort of has what it is. And and you are a representative of that industry. And so you're, this is a little bit of shouting at the messenger, but, you know, I would appreciate you bringing that back to your to your organization.
You know, I'm not sure where we stand. These 60 days are up next week. We don't really get until November. Is this a fait accompli here? I mean, do we have any actions to take?
I mean, the only action right now, Mr. Chair, is to close the public hearing. And then you can discuss amongst yourselves as a board. You know, what you can either do, either vote for final approval or you deny it. It's really in the boards.
If we don't vote for it or whatever, and it becomes it expires, it happens anyway.
Correct.
All right. Oh. I'll make a motion to close the public hearing. Do we have a second?
I'll second that, Michael Gee.
Did we ask to find out if anybody wanted to speak on this first?
No, we forgot. I'm sorry. Does anyone out there want to speak? Raise your hand.
Lydia was the only one to raise their hand, but I don't know if anyone else is here for this. I, the only neighbor was the Kaplan residence on Wine Coop. So, and I haven't received any core correspondence from from them.
All right, we can go ahead and close the public hearing, I suppose.
All right, did we get a set?
We did. Michael seconded.
All those in favor, a roll call vote. Michael Gee.
Aye.
Jeff Christensen.
Aye.
John Clark.
Aye.
David Miller. Aye. All right, so where does this leave us? We, we, a variance, I guess, is not required because it's within the federal regulations, even though the village regulations would not allow through the tall structure. I mean, I'm like what we, yeah, we, you know. Anyone have any opinions?
What we could do is approve it on the condition that they provide us the proper drawings and that they consult with our village engineer on the structural requirements for a building permit. And so at least we have the requirement that they have to provide us documentation for our files.
That's what Brandy asked for. So, good. Okay. Is that a motion?
Yes.
Okay, so John Clark makes a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second that, Michael Gee.
I don't see any other course of action at this point.
Right.
Right, it's, I think we all agree.
So that they have to provide us with documentation on the separation so that it meets the eligible standards. And they have to continue to consult with our village engineer to make sure all the structural problems are verified. Those are the two conditions.
Correct. It goes another 14 feet taller. Is the footings, the foundation strong enough to pull that? So that's good. Michael Gee.
A second. Yes, aye.
Jeff Christensen.
Aye.
John Clark.
Aye.
David Miller. Aye. Okay. This was a very strange case. The second continued old business is Hal Book and Lisa Bear on Seventy-Eight East Market Street.
Hi, I'm here for Helen, Lisa, Michael Byrd.
Lisa's here.
Lisa's here as well.
Yep.
Am I sharing my screen, Ryan?
Yes.
Okay. I have everything. I just have to find where it is now. Okay. All right. So we met with the code enforcement officer, the interim code enforcement officer with Rod Morrison from the LRC Group, myself and Lisa to review the floodplain issue that we have there. Rod walked him through the process of what he was planning on doing. And essentially, if I can read it right from the letter, that they determined the volume of the floodplain that would be displaced by the proposed built effort, which has been calculated to be a displacement of 258 cubic feet. In order to mitigate the displacement, we are providing a compensatory storage volume equivalent size to the excavated amount immediately to the rear of the reconstructed pool building. This William, this volume will offset in excess of 100% of that volume displaced, which is an accepted methodology to prevent any net filling of the floodplain in the desired product area. In addition, we will make sure that all the mechanical equipment is set at an elevation two feet higher than the mean floodplain elevation. The code enforcement officer was happy to see all that work was done. I don't know that we've actually gotten an official sign off from him yet, but verbally he said that that was good and that was a standard procedure for other projects he's been involved with. We've included downspouts on the elevations in all four corners of the barn. This way, we can control the water coming off the roof. The downspouts spouts on the south side of the building will actually empty into this depression that we've created. And on the north side of the building, we have one in each corner. In addition, I've added a three-foot concrete apron in front of the garage bays. The downspouts will will dump onto that and then into a French drain that will be in between the concrete slab apron and the blacktop. That water will go through the French drain and dump into the catch basin, the existing catch basin. And I'll point all of this out on the site plan once we get there. We decided, in order to deal with the stormwater management, we decided to actually make the whole building a rectangle. It was a little bit easier to deal with the gutters and the drainage. And in the end, I think it actually made a more attractive building. So we've added an area of three feet eight by 22 foot 10 to the structure to accommodate the downspouts. And that's on the kind of the southwest side of the building. In addition, we've chosen this exterior light, which I do believe does meet off your horizontal cutoff where the bulb is is kind of up here so that the shields all the light going in the upward direction. This is the site plan that Rodney provided to the CEO, showing what we're proposing to do. Again, the red line is our is our new construction. And then the white line is the previous construction. But essentially, this rectangular area shaded south of the of the barn is the excavated area.
Michael, I'm not seeing your diagram. I'm seeing your letter.
Probably have to go back in again.
Okay, there we go.
So, so this is the shaded area here where there will be a depression. We're allowed to make that out of whatever material we want. It's not a perk requirement. It's just an area that's depressed that takes the stormwater that would have gone where our new structure is located and and has it set there until it can slowly recede and as the waters back down from the creek. I guess I have to do this every time. So let me blow this up. So this is very similar to what we previously submitted. Again, we're 11 foot seven inches from the property line on the east side, increasing the, well, currently, the building is over the setback. We now have a completely rectangular building shown here. This is the area of depression where the water will reside until it can drain back into the creek. We'll have a downspout in each corner of the garage structure. This is showing our three-foot apron. And if I blow this up, you'll see where we indicated a French drain going across the edge of the concrete apron and then piped under the blacktop into the existing catch basin located right here. Excuse me. So this shows the new floor plan. Showing the concrete apron with the French drain and the underground pipe to the catch basin. You'll see this is the area where we squared it off. So now we have a rectangle structure. It didn't, nothing really changed much upstairs. We still have the golf simulator on the east side, the rec room on the west side and the full bathroom. These are the new elevations. As you can see, we were showing the downspouts coming off the roof on both east and west side and the north side of the structure. This is the elevation of the west side. We've accommodated the request for making the window panes more vertical as opposed to horizontal. Again, this window is a copy of the existing window that's almost in the same place, which is well, this window up in the gable end. These larger, little bit larger windows in the bathroom areas and then the French doors. We're indicating the lights on either side of the door here, as well as I have a light on each end on the north side. And since there's not enough room between the garages to put lights, we will put recess cans in this overhang of the bay here to help illuminate the middle garage door. The east elevation still has many of the small windows that we previously discussed. On the neighbor's side, this one window that's a little bit larger, it's set back and it's in the stairwell. So look directly out of that window towards the neighbors because it's halfway up the stair. And then on the south elevation, this is pretty much stayed the same. Again, we've changed the windows so that they're more vertical in orientation. We've included lights on either side of the door as well as the downspouts coming out each corner. I think that's covers everything that we were requested to provide.
You've done a very good job, Michael and Lisa, answering all the concerns of the neighbor, answering our concerns. I'm pleased that the small wing goes facing the neighbor. It looks, it was a lot of work, but I think it looks very good to me. Other board members have comments?
And the only thing I might say is that, you know, I, I think we can assume that you're accurately representing the the floodplain solution that will be agreed upon, but we need that in writing for the file.
From the
From the
And the solution is, I think, meets the code in terms of a non-residential use. But if this ever was to be considered for an accessory apartment or some other residential use, I'm not sure that it would because you're, you have, you know, you displaced the amount of fill you're putting in, but you still, it's in the floodplain. You haven't raised it out of the floodplain. So therefore, I don't think that first floor would be habitable. And, you know, it's not proposed to be habitable, but it does leave you in a situation where if you're down the line, you want to turn that into an accessory apartment or something where someone might stay. To me, it doesn't fix the solution in terms of taking it out of the floodplain. It just treats it like a non-residential use. That's my understanding of the floodplain law.
I know that we had the surveyors in there to help us determine the exact elevation of the 100-year floodplain. I don't have that information back yet. But if it means that we need to bring up that pool lounge area up six inches, I think that would be something that we should consider. I don't think it'll affect any, anything else. We have, that area is is only a single story anyway. So if the floor came up, I don't think it would really be detrimental to the visibly of the structure or really have any ill effect in terms of what the planning board would agree to today.
Yeah.
But we can make that a condition of the approval that the final comments from the CEO be submitted to Ryan put in the record.
Yeah.
A copy of that.
Otherwise, I think you've done a good job on all the questions we've asked.
I agree. I think there were, there was a list of concerns from the Rowe family next door. And I think you've, you've answered all of them and done so sensitively. I like the design. Getting to John's point just now, one of the concerns that the Rose had raised was that this was not be used as a residence. This is not for over, it's not an overnight dwelling. Else, the application should have been for an accessory dwelling unit. I think that's one of the related to the point I believe John just made. And if it were an accessory dwelling unit, there would be a lot of other concerns. When that concern came up in the meeting, we were assured that this would not be an overnight dwelling structure. Is that correct?
Yes. And, and there's no indication, there's no thought of trying to create this as an Airbnb.
I'm not talking about rentals. I'm talking about anyone non-rent living there.
No, no one's going to be living there. No.
Yeah, well, then no one should be sleeping there is my point. When that concern came up in a prior meeting, the response I heard was no, no one will be staying there. This is not, neither is it rental nor is it a non-rental dwelling, a place where people would stay overnight. I just want to make sure we're clear on that because I believe that's something that should also be documented.
Can I speak up? It is a pool house. It's a pool house, a rec house that my kids will be using to hang out in, that type of thing. So I would just want the board to be clear. This is not Airbnb whatsoever, but it is our pool house.
Fine, that. Yeah, thank you, Lisa. That's what we understood. So, and you're confirming that. It's a pool house. It's, people will go in there when they're swimming at the pool. Maybe they'll take a shower, maybe they'll relax. But it's not for dwelling. It's not for overnight sleeping under any circumstance. Otherwise, it would be an accessory dwelling unit. So you're confirming that it's a pool house. So I'm just asking that it be documented in the in the submission.
I don't think it's there's a difference between a permanent dwelling in some place where somebody might in the family sleep at night once in a while as a guest. You know, I think what we're suggesting, this can't be a permanent dwelling. It can't be something that people use as their regular accommodations.
And I'd be satisfied, what John just said, I'd be satisfied is that we're documented that it can't be used as a permanent dwelling. Whether it's rented or non-rented, it is not a permanent dwelling unit. I'd like that to be, I'd like that to be part of it.
For an, for an accessory apartment.
I understand if your kids come over and they and they crash on the couch and they end up sleeping overnight, that happens.
Or it's Thanksgiving.
I just want to be realistic here. Like, it's a whole house.
But it's not, I think the word permanent was that John said, I'd like to see that. It's not a permanent dwelling unit. Otherwise, we'd have to go through the accessory dwelling unit discussion and that would be like a whole nother thing.
Right, but, you know, if it's Thanksgiving or Christmas and a dozen relatives show up and need to place down to crash for a night or two, they certainly, you know, could sleep on couches or air beds or whatever in that place, as long as it isn't raining and the flood's coming. But, you know, as I said last time, I don't think it's going to happen anymore because the mayor opened the valves three times this summer. So the likelihood of a 2011 Hurricane Irene flooding the area causing the road to wash away will not happen anymore as long as those valves continue to work. So.
And, and I just want to, I just wanted one final thing. I just want to say I do appreciate the work that you've done. It's been very sensitive. You were very responsive to your neighbor's concerns. You narrowed the width of the building to bring in another foot, two inches away from the line. I think you did a terrific job there and I wish, I wish all of our applicants would be that sensitive to the feedback they get. And I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Michael.
Someone like to make a motion to approve the site plan for 187 East Market Street.
I'll make, I'll make that motion with the provision, as John mentioned, that documentation be provided proving that the floodplain calculations are correct and it's not to be used as a permanent dwelling.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
A roll call vote. Michael Gee.
Aye.
Jeff Christensen.
Aye.
John Clark.
Aye.
David Miller. Aye. We're done.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We're clearing cases here. So Unlimited Tomorrow, Ryan said, is not prepared. They're still trying to find their septic system. They'll be back. So the next item on the agenda is 55 South Street. Susan Merson and Robert Poye. Three-season porch. And I think everyone was quite happy with the wording. I think I used Jeff's words were best. And he said, you know, about the evergreen plantings. I think we're happy with that. And I don't think anyone had a problem with the three-season porch in the back. Anybody have any comments about that? That was never the issue. It was, you know, covering the air conditioners.
Right.
I would like to see an updated site plan that that shows the actual new choices that are being made for the evergreen plantings. And that they'll be four feet high.
Well, yeah, they'll be four feet high. What, you mean an official site plan? You want the architect to write down? Could I send you photographs?
We want a site plan. We provided a site plan with with proposed plantings earlier, which were unacceptable. So it's just a matter of updating that site plan with the new evergreen, four-foot-high evergreen plantings noted in the locations that they'll be. It's just that simple.
So he, so Robert has to do that. The architect.
Yes, and I believe we can.
Do I have to come back to a meeting for that?
No, 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 no.
No, I, that, that can just be a condition of our approval.
Okay, great. So we'll get that to you by the end of the week. We give it to Ryan?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, terrific. So then we, are we good?
Almost.
Almost. Okay, what's next?
Do you have any more questions about the porch?
No.
Okay.
For a year, right, you guys? It's good for a year? It's good for a year? But if the, if you approve it, then I have a year to build it, right? Is that true?
That's correct. Your site plan approval approval is good for one calendar year. Yes.
That's good. Okay.
Okay, so I'm gonna make a motion to approve the site plan for addition of a three-season porch at 55 South Street.
With the, with the updates per the planting amendments.
Robert knows what that is, right? You guys? Okay, okay, thank you.
I'll make that motion with that condition.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor? Michael Gee.
Aye.
Jeff Christensen.
Aye.
John Clark.
Aye.
David Miller. Aye. Good luck.
Thanks. Thanks, you guys. Bye. Nice to meet you all. Goodbye.
Yes, we're closing cases. It's very exciting. Okay, 30 Livingston Street is not ready either, Ryan tells me, with the above-ground pool application. Will they'll be back?
Yes.
So we're, okay, new business, the vinyl vault. Coming back to some changes in the signage.
Good evening.
Okay, so, um, timely signs has drawn up, decided to the, uh, records. Or did we get all these calculations done correctly? But with the square footage, total eight point one two square feet.
That's what I have as well.
Ryan, the, um, sorry if I misunderstood your email. Did you say that, that the early, the earlier submission was an error and they were going to provide another one by the meeting? Or is that the one that you sent out to us earlier?
That was the one I sent out to you last week.
Can we, can we bring up, can we share the one, make sure we're all looking at the same one? The application?
Sure. Andrew, do you have that queued up or no?
Uh, I mean, I have the printout of it, but.
Okay, yeah, that's not gonna, hold, hold on.
So I have a question in point number four, signage available 13.96 square feet. How was that number arrived at?
One. It's thirty, thirty five point six five feet. And then we subtract the century twenty one, century twenty one, one, one salon.
The, the item number three, A, B, and C, century twenty one, century twenty one, and one, one salon add up to thirteen point three one.
So then you have to subtract their already approved signage, Jeff.
Oh, where was that? How much was that?
So you already have the hanging sign and the door sign.
So that's on a different form?
Nope, it's right there.
Where?
It's right on the app. Look at, look, look.
Oh, 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 okay, okay, okay.
Now, we're adding the half a record of the left window and, uh, we buy and sell to the right window.
And the middle one that says Rhinebeck Vinyl Vault, David.
Okay, so that's the, okay, the door. Oh, I see. So the door has a sign too.
Yeah, though the door sign and the hanging sign were approved at the previous meeting. You had to adjust these three windows.
Now, these three windows with the half a record Rhinebeck and we buy and sell is eight point one two more square footage.
Yes, sir.
And that, and that still falls within the calculation of available square footage. These just window decals.
Yes, sir. I believe we had eight point nine one five remaining square foot to fall within, or square feet, excuse me.
Right. All right. Anybody have any questions about this?
So is the, um, yes, sorry. Is the, um, I haven't looked at those other three. Is the, is the vinyl vault storefront almost three times the width of the other three? In other words, the other three are getting very small signage allocations. And that could change. Someone could move out and another person move in and want to say, well, I, I want, I want a bigger sign.
The, uh, three signs on the form, the century twenty one, the other century twenty one, the one, one salon, I believe are all hanging signs.
Yeah.
I don't know that, I didn't see if they had any, uh, window, uh, signage decals or otherwise.
I don't think they do. I mean, real estate has pictures of houses in the window, but they don't have any lettering on the glass itself.
In the past, we've always allowed the, the property owner to allocate, and as long as it doesn't overshoot the required allowance, they, they have to work that out amongst themselves as to who gets the most or the least.
So our assumption then is that the property owner has, uh, told or granted, um, Rhinebeck Vinyl, any amount of square foot of signage that's, that's not used for the entire building, you can have all of it.
Yeah. It's up to the landlord to allocate it.
Okay, and we, our understanding is that's what the landlord's done.
That's the formula on that, uh, on the, on the calculation page.
Then, then just for the record, under point five, we've got these three signs, thirty four inch by seventeen inches is four feet. Ten point five inch by thirty seven inches is actually two point six nine feet. Nine point five inch by thirty nine inches is actually two point five seven feet. They're still under the remaining allocation, but I would suggest we correct the calculations here for future, because it's going to leave less than five feet for anyone in the future.
Okay.
So I guess that's something, uh, Andrew and I can, uh,
Double check.
Work with to clean up, uh, yeah, the application itself.
Yeah, you see the, you see the point, Ryan. It's point number five on the application page. Ten point five inch by thirty seven inches, not two point two three, and the nine point five inch by thirty nine inches, not one point eight nine. It's, it's more than that. When you add it up, there will still be remaining footage, but it'll be a good bit less than five point eight four, and that's all that will be left in the future. So.
Well, I'm sure your calculator's on fire, Jeff. I'm, I'm not going to try to, uh,
Jeff is our resident mathematician.
I'm not going to try to break, break that down.
Well, let me, let me ask you, does it matter? Um, do we use these, do we use these documents? Do we consult back? Does someone consult back to these documents? And let's say in the future, either century twenty one, either of them, or the salon wants to add another sign. Uh, item number six here should say this is how much is left and it's less than five point eight four feet.
Right.
So I think that would have to be a discussion with the landlord, first of all. And I think it would have to be decided on how the buildings are divided because I don't think um, in that plaza, those buildings are one continuous, um, structure. I think it's very close together.
Yeah.
Um, but how I think the code reflects, and I don't know, John Clark, if you want to jump in on this, it's always come down to frontage and how that frontage is divided by two on how really it's broken down, um, for each tenant.
I try not to get involved with math. Not my strong suit. So I'll, I'll, I'll trust Jeff on this and I'll trust Ryan to correct the form. And as long as they have remaining footage, uh, then it seems to me we can go ahead with application. If somebody comes in and wants more in the future, uh, Ryan will pull this form and, and say you've got five point, whatever it is, left and work it out with your landlord if you want more.
That's, that's exactly my question, John. I was just asking, does it even matter? Um, or is this form the one that we're going to pull out? Uh, and if we are going to pull out this form and it says, uh, to determine how much is remaining, it's not five, eight, four, it's four something. That's, that, that's my only point because I'm not sure how the zoning enforcement officer or whoever goes over these determines how much is left. If they're using these forms, they should be correct.
Yes, and so, some, some stores are one store per building, but some stores like, uh, the one that the, uh, Z, ZBA is, is hearing on Thursday night is the telephone building where they have several doors in the building, just like this building. And we have to get the calculations right. So Jeff is correct. We should have this calculation done correctly. As hopefully, after the ZBA, uh, rules on it comes back to us beginning of November, we can have that building down as officially recorded. When someone comes in and replaces the coach store, we'll know the calculation that's left in the building. So, um, Brian, do we have a separate folder for each store or each building?
It's based on address. So in this case, we're working with twenty three East Market Street.
So this, this.
In the plaza. So this is something, um, I believe it's, it's not with Rhinebeck Bank specifically. It's owned by Rhinebeck Bank. Um, but, but it would, it would be connected with twenty three East Market Street.
So this page, when it's corrected, will now be the first page in that folder, something you would look at next time somebody comes in with a sign for twenty three East Market.
Yes, I mean, if, if we want to get really technical, it's broken down by applicant. So twenty three East Market Street, whatever suite would also include twenty first century. And then one on one salon would be there. And then now, um, Rhinebeck Vinyl Vault would replace either the uh, olive oil business that was there and then the clothes shop that was there. This, this will, this will be added in its own folder uh, within that order.
Records for future reference. Okay. Anybody have any other questions about this sign? The, the new signs for the building? Okay, would someone like to make a motion to approve the additional signage for vinyl vault, twenty three East Market Street? I'll make the motion.
Second.
All those in favor? Michael Gee.
Hi.
John Clark.
Hi.
Jeff Christensen.
Hi.
David Miller. I. Congratulations. Good luck.
Thank you very much, everyone. Ryan, I'll get you, uh, updated form.
Of course. Yes, and, and Andrew, yes.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
Press with the way we're closing cases, gentlemen. The next one is a new one. I need to kill you. Walker Architecture. Fifteen Kramer Road. This is sort of a major change in this plan. As it exists. Going to look.
Hi, everyone. Um, my name is Jess Walker. I'm here with my father, Lester Walker. We're architects based in Woodstock, New York, and we're doing a project which technically is an addition, but it's a pretty substantial addition to an existing building, um, on Kramer Road behind the hospital and across the road from the fairgrounds, a small suburban neighborhood there. Our, our addition, which is currently in construction, is replacing most of the house. We're keeping the foundation and the infrastructure. Um, and we are, we're replacing the main front of the building and adding an addition for the sleeping rooms on the side of the building and back of the building. What we're proposing today is a small guest cottage here. If you can see in this in this diagram, this is, this was the existing building, the footprint. The new wing is here with the master suite in it. There's an outdoor pergola, and then this is a guest cottage, um, which we are proposing today as an accessory dwelling unit. The existed, the building we tore down to, to build this new structure was a three bedroom building. We're adding currently building out at two bedrooms. So the accessory dwelling unit, which is a one bedroom cottage, will not be adding bedrooms to the property at all. Here in the previous survey, you can see the existing footprint and our new site plan. Here's that footprint with the front of the building. We're adding an additional leg onto the west side. And then in pink is the, our proposed cottage. The, uh, the layout will, our intent with the, with the, with the, the front facade of the building is to fit in with the neighborhood to match the neighborhood. And I have an elevation I can show you later. The composition of the building is surrounds a, a central garden, which is a central courtyard. Our, uh, our client has spent considerable time in Asia and we are building her a Japanese garden, but with all native plant species and the format of the project is built around that.
Now, there's a lot of stuff being added here. There is a calculation of lot coverage.
Yes, I have that all. That's what this entire page is dedicated to lot coverage. And we are maxed out. This includes the deck, the steps, the bench at twenty nine point nine six and thirty percent is allowable.
Close, okay.
Uh, driveway, the driveway is not included in lot coverage and neither is the steps. And, and the bench would only be included if it has a roof on it and it's permanent to the ground. But.
Do you not include the driveway in lot coverage?
Uh, no, it's not a structure. It's really, uh, according to our code, it's, um, driveways are exempted and patios and steps even are included as exempted, only something with a roof over it.
Okay, that's not, that's not the way I read the code, but that, um, that makes our lives easier. We, um, we really, we really pushed to get, to get within the thirty percent. Uh, recently we were asked to redesign the driveway, having the additional space for the cottage, for the new accessory apartment behind the, the front line of the front facade. So we we added this nine by eighteen space to the side of the building. Um, and we widened the driveway. So if we didn't need to include the driveway, we might expand the pergola a little bit. Um, but my, my reading of the code is it's any impervious surface.
Well, the lot coverage area, which is, I think, what we're talking about here.
Yes.
Lot coverage area is defined as the total ground area or footprint of all structures expressed as a percentage of the lot area exclusive of uncovered porches, parapet, steps, and terraces. And if you look up the definition of a structure, a driveway is not included as a structure.
Okay, well, that's great. Um, okay, thank you.
But in terms of the parking, um, seems to be all three parking spaces should be behind the front plane of the building.
Uh, we were told that, well, one, one is in a garage here.
Right.
And we were told that the second for the primary building could be in the front yard.
Yeah.
Which is fairly typical for a neighborhood of this type. The accessory structure parking is, is, is a separate line in the code and that has to be behind the front plane.
Yeah, probably you're right. It says under, certainly for the accessory unit, you have to do it behind the front plane of the building, but for residential district parking provisions, it says, except in a driveway, which may not exceed eighteen feet in width and must be delineated. Parking is not allowed in the front part of any portion thereof. So I guess the house can be, but the accessory unit can't.
Yes, that's our.
It seems like you've, you've solved the problem here.
Yes. Um, to move on, the cottage is separated from the building. Uh, that is our third bedroom. So we, there's no need to increase the capacity of the septic, although we can talk about the septic in a minute. Our exterior lighting is all downlights in front, under the porch. Um, and this trellis is really an outdoor dining area. So that will have some sconces, all lighting, all exterior lighting is shielded. Um, and this little S, SC one is floating there was actually on the building. Looks like I had a, uh, computer problem there. But you can see that the, the, the deck surrounds a large open garden and the whole building is a U-shaped around that. Cottage itself is sort of quaint little shed structure. Um, this is the front elevation. All you'll see is this door, but you'll be looking through a trellis. So you really won't see anything. It's a natural wood siding. The black framed windows and a green. It's a natural wood siding, the black framed windows and a green roof, either in. Painted metal or galvalume or real copper, uh, we'd love to use copper, but the prices are skyrocketing right now. And here are all of the visible exterior lights, all shielded and pointing down. Be a front fence, fence next to the accessory parking spot, and then in the back, there's a small bench which does have a roof. And it sits on the ground, probably in gravel, I, I, I think that would be probably not be considered or be considered a structure, but. It's irrelevant, really.
Yeah.
And then the front of the new building currently in construction is here, this elevation. Just so you can see that we're trying to fit into the neighborhood, for the most part, although it's a unique, a unique site plan. Uh, Anita is here, the client, uh, Anita, you want to introduce yourself?
Hello, my name is Anita Killian, I'm the owner of this property and I appreciate your time tonight. Um, you might know or not know yet that my family lives on Kramer Road, my mother lives. At thirteen and my sister lives at fourteen, so my plan is to move back next year after the property is done and after I retire. I've been living in Asia since two thousand and eight and looking forward to coming home and being with my family. And the addition of the little cottage in the back is primarily for my family, we have a lot of relatives in. Austining, my mother is ninety-four, her sister is ninety-eight, her other sister is ninety-two. And um, kind of short, they want to be with each other, they want to come and stay um and be together, so the idea is to have. Some place where my family can come, and then given their age, you know, if that turns out to be a short period of time. You know, all my friends are in Asia, they don't, I don't have friends in America really anymore or not in Boston, I mean, not in New York, they're all in Boston. So for friends to come and visit me, the idea is to have uh space, space to accommodate that. So that's the thinking and I appreciate your consideration in this request.
But you're here tonight because um, this, this requires a public hearing, right?
Correct.
The accessory apartment, so um, we will um. Board has questions, feel free to ask, but we'll be scheduling public hearing for the beginning of November, election day, we always meet on election day. To, to have the public hearing, so any, any board members have any comments?
I, I have, basically, I like everything about the uh, the look of it and. It, it fits into the, into the neighborhood, I think, very well, I haven't been by that, but looking at the plans, the only thing. That stands out to me is this was a house that was demolished except for the foundation. And it's a new model and there's no indication of septic, we got. A communication uh from Ryan that there's a cesspool in the southwest corner um. And that was fine in the fifties or sixties when this house was built, but I don't believe that is, that's. That's appropriate, New York State or federal building code at this point, you now have another separate structure in the back. And there is no indication on his plans about how that's being brought up to code. And the only thing that I can see that's, that's left from the original house is the foundation and the driveway. And I don't think the building code would allow a cesspool in the front. For this at this point, so that it just needs to be addressed, everything else I'm fine with.
Um, we uh, we had an engineer look at it, the existing cesspool is, is in very good shape, the soil. Is very porous in that, in that area, and our engineer proposed a one-thousand gallon septic tank in between the house and the existing cesspool. Turning it into a seepage pit. That would take solids, the, the new tank would handle the solids and the cesspool would act as the laterals. Um, there isn't room for a proper septic field, but this is, this is an acceptable solution to our engineer. And we have verbal approval from the health department, um, which I will get in writing.
Yeah, we just need to see it in writing, it's like, if you can, if you can make it work, I, I'm fine with it, but it, you know, it has to be according to code.
Yeah, we're putting in a new one thousand gallon tank to, to take the heavy lifting here. Okay.
Can you estimate when you might get something from the health department because they're notoriously slow?
I just got the form today and he, he seemed, he seemed interested in, in receiving it um and, and gave me verbal approval, so I, I, I would say next week.
All right, well, it'd be great if it's here for the public hearing and we can move on this, but.
Like, I guess my question would be, you have the accessory structure in the back, how is that going to? Be shown to go all the way from the back of the property, or does that require its own? You know, that's, that's something I want to know too.
It connects to the house.
Mike, I, I think they'll have, that will be in the plumbing details, that's more in the. Building permit phase and something to work out with Ken, Ken will make sure that there's. Some system within the plumbing that it gets forced um to the front yard, to the uh, septic system.
Again, we're not adding any bedrooms.
Well, I, 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 I think that as long as you're going to get the written approval from the Duchess County Board of Health. On your proposed system, that, that would be good, and as. Michael points out, uh, we would expect to see in the detailed plans, how you intend to move. The uh, the waste from the back to the front, because looking at the topographical portions of the map. The front of the property is higher than the back of the property. And you're putting the accessory dwelling, the cottage, in the back of the property, so um.
So Jess, I think in that floor, sorry, sorry, Jeff, so in that floor plan layout, Jess, we can. Um, work with Ken um. And how to sort of reference that, either pla- like a plumbing main line or something like that to sort of provide. A detail because uh, Ken is working with the Board of Health on another um, project right now that. Almost is the exact circumstances here where it needs to be shown, um, the plumbing details of, of how. Um, it gets from, I mean, this is. Really in interior stuff, guys, I mean, you're, you really shouldn't be having this much oversight. Um, you know, this is really building department strictly with Ken and the buil- and the building inspector.
So, uh, do we need a motion or we're just going to schedule?
Uh, you need a motion to schedule the public hearing, um, if everyone feels confident for November second. Um, we can do that, or um, if you want to give sufficient time for the Board of Health, we can schedule it for November sixteenth.
You think you'll have the answers by uh, November second? Well, we can schedule it for November second, then you can push it back if you don't have the paperwork.
And, and normally what we do is uh, we approve something like this with a, a condition that it has to meet Board of Health approval.
Yes.
Because, like I said, they are not usually very prompt.
And you can't get your C of O without it, so um, you know, we're assured of compliance. By that, all right, so uh, I'll make a motion to uh, schedule a hearing on November second. For fifteen Kramer Road accessory apartment, we have a second.
Second.
Um, okay, Michael Gee.
Aye.
Jeff Christensen.
Aye.
John Clark.
Aye.
David Miller, aye. All right, we'll see you back here on election day.
Thank you very much, everybody.
Last item.
Have a good night.
Yes, have a good night, is uh, Hector and Debbie, twenty-two Chestnut Street, proposed a pool. An in-ground pool. And I guess they're not here, but.
They're not here, but uh, the pool company uh.
Yep, can you hear me now?
Yep, we can hear you, Stephen.
Okay, beautiful, how you doing, Ryan? Um, yeah, I'm representing uh. The Rodriguezes in this matter, um, we're proposing a in-ground swimming pool in place of an existing uh, concrete slab basketball court. At twenty-two Chestnut Street in the Village.
And this is because it's in the historic district.
That's correct.
Okay. Looks like a pool, anybody have any questions?
Uh, I didn't see the site plan on this, do we have one that can be shown?
Hold on.
I can, I can share my screen if that helps.
Stephen, yes.
I have it queued up and I got a couple of markups on it too, if that helps. Sure, are you able to see that, Ryan?
Yeah, we can all see it, yep.
Okay, so this is the site plan, um, I'm sorry. Site plan, uh, engineered, uh, documented, drawn up, um, we have some access in there, but yeah, basically in the um. Lower part of the lot here, next to the, the Dutch um, historical building. Uh, there's an existing basketball court, I don't know if it um, received a variance or approvals in the past to be installed, um. Concrete deck that sits on top of, um, I show in here, you know, we're showing the, the size kind of depicted in there. Where we, right now, existing, there's about almost fourteen hundred square feet of the concrete slab. Um, basketball court and on our proposed. Pool patio that we have with the gardens, we've got, you know, just shy of thirteen hundred square feet, so we're reducing the. Amount of space that we're taking up on the property with the structure and, you know, at the, at the same time with the church being behind them at the rear of the lot. You know, getting rid of the basketball court, which the hoop right now sits above the uh, privacy fence that's already installed. Um, it's, it's something a little bit more um. Some, something a little softer to, to the village, um, the Rodriguezes, they're, they're, you know, they're. They're looking to have a space to enjoy in the village, stay at home, hopefully their kids have kids in the future and, you know, they have a little special spot to, to enjoy it. To, to keep the family coming around um and to enjoy for themselves. Uh, there's no use really for the basketball court anymore, um, and we're hoping to be able to get a pool in there in place of it.
Anyone have any questions?
Uh, when it says existing Dutch barn renovations by others, what does that mean? Because. If, if that's an existing historic building, we should know what's going on.
Right, so they, they have plans, so in our, in our three D model, they have plans to put like, uh, you can see in our. In, in, right here in this drawing, they, they've got some doors coming out to it, so eventually if the pool is accepted and they're able to put the pool in there, their next move would be. Um, renovations of the Dutch barn to then allow some egress from the Dutch barn to the pool area.
And you'll come back for that?
That, that would be coming back for, yep, right now, it's, it's putting the budget to, to best use and, you know, water in the ground to swim in is. Is more accommodating than a, another, you know, place to hang out indoors.
Is there a reason it's so close to the rear property line?
Um, no, well, we're, what, well, I guess so, yes, so they have their um, existing um, seepage pit. For their septic, so they had a new septic system put in, um, we, I have the plan for that, so you can see. So this was their pit put in, this was two thousand and eleven, they had septic redone at the house. Um, put in a new tank, waistline, thousand gallon tank, uh, and they. Indicate a proposed expansion area in the case that the uh, seepage pit ran into problems or there was more expansion to the house or if the Dutch barn. Garage was to be renovated and uh, turned into any type of uh, living quarters or needing a sink or toilet. For a po- potential pool house, um, they would have a place to expand into for uh, septic. So right now, the available space is really where that basketball court is currently sitting and, you know, it, it. Kind of with, given the property and everything, I mean, it's the only place really to put the pool. And, you know, to get rid of a basketball court that's non-functional for the client, and if a different client lived there. You know, would cause more noise or disturbance than the pool, you know, given the. Age of the client and the way they would use it, um, it seemed like the best case scenario.
And there's a six-foot fuck privacy fence on that rear property line?
Yeah, there's actually a six-foot privacy fence starting, which is depicted in this drawing as well from two thousand and eleven. Um, starting about right here uh, before the cor- back corner of the house. Um, comes down to the back corner of the property, comes over and all the way back up, and they have added fencing in here. Um, which, which actually meets pool code already that would block the um, view from the road. Um, the other, the other part of our plan with fencing for the pool. If I go back to over here, is we would pro- propose continued privacy fencing from the corner of the porch, existing porch. To hook up with the existing um, privacy fencing, which is six feet. That's existing, um, that way, you know, anybody driving down Chestnut Street, you know, looking at the house, they see a beautiful, you know, Victorian and they don't. Peek into the backyard, you know, seeing people swimming.
All right.
Well, I, I see on what you just showed there, it says proposed vinyl fence, I don't believe that's allowable in our code, is it?
No, not in the historic district.
Okay, if it's not vinyl, we can change that up, um, I, I have a bunch of different fence options, we kind of just uh, went with the generic one at the time. To then go into ideas, but if it has to be cedar, if it's allowed to be painted white, it, whatever the case may be, um. You know, we, there's this um, cedar slat design, we've been using a, a couple of projects, one in the agricultural district over in Rhinebeck. Um, it's a very nice, you know, it breathes and it's attractive, um. But we're open to what your recommendations are, what you'd like to see and what colors it's allowed to be, if any. Aside from uh, uh, traditional wood. Uh, we did get, we were in contact with uh, Duchess County Board of Health, so where our access comes through. Between the fence property line and the expansion area, we, we have a email letter from um. Duchess County B O H uh, with our agreement on what's to be done on that access road to preserve the expansion area for future use if needed. Um, which essentially, I think it's part of the package that you guys have. Um, but it, it basically states that we'll be putting down twelve eighteen inches of mulch with three-quarter plywood on top of it, hopefully the cost of lumber goes down. And um, then we'll be driving over top of that to cushion any um, compaction onto that expansion area.
Stephen, this is Ryan, um, could you resend that? Because I don't believe that letter made it, I don't, I don't believe that was included from what Brittany. Sent up, if you can get me a ca- copy of that, that would be awesome.
Yeah, I'll send it over to you right after we get done with this.
Sure. No rush, but, you know, as long as I get a copy, um, that would be great.
No problem, um, three D models, we have a little bit of three D model of what's going on. Then this is essentially what we're, is what we're looking to do, a little bit of patio, the pool, cedar fencing, screening the filter equipment. You know, and, and what you, you know, that fence already in the background is existing, um, the, there are some. There are some uh, evergreens on the opposite side of the fence, which is the property of the church. Um, but in what my client had suggested me to bring up with the, with the board is, you know, if there's any worry that. You know, in taking out the basketball court, which could be disturbing, but if there's any worry in putting this in and. You know, do it, having a little bit more screening, they would be willing to donate um, evergreens, you know, twelve foot high for. The opposite side of the fence on the church's side and have them planted um, to provide a little bit more barrier. You know, they would help absorb any noise, even though the fence would echo noise towards the main dwelling. Um, but just a little added thing in there to consider if that's something valuable to the board and the neighbors.
Well, it's very, very well thought out and well designed. Anybody have any comments? So Ryan, we don't need any public hearings or anything on this.
That is up to the board. The board also has the decision of doing a site visit if they deem it necessary. It is all the discretion of the board.
I know it's at our discretion, but hasn't it typically been our policy for something this large, this close to a neighbor's lot line to have a public hearing?
That's a discussion that I believe Jeff just voiced. So what does the other three members think?
I'm fine with the presentation, you know, I walk and I don't think it's going to be much of an intrusion. And they've said if the church wanted more screening on their side, they would, you know, they would put plantings on their side. I don't need to go over there.
I don't think it's visible from the street and I don't, I don't think we need to go over there. John?
No, I don't think we need a site plan.
No, I'm, I'm not. I, I agree. We don't have to have a, a visit. I'm just asking, would it, would it be consistent? I mean, I, for the number of months I've been here, you've had a number of public hearings. My question is, do we need a public hearing or not? Given how close it is to the lot line, what would be consistent with how we've dealt with other applications? Did we, a question, did we, did we do, refresh my memory, did we do a public hearing for the pool that was proposed on Livingston?
No.
No? Okay.
No.
Then maybe not.
Yeah, I don't think we necessarily need it.
Okay.
Well, then if, if nobody has any other objections, I guess we could, we could make a motion to approve the pool at 22 Chestnut. Everyone okay with that?
I'll make a motion to approve with one condition that the, any renovation or changes to the existing barn have to come back to the planning board for approval.
Okay.
And I would, I would ask that perhaps the Lutheran church be asked if they want the vegetation that the applicants would say that they would plant on their side.
So Stephen, I think that's something you can coordinate and I, I can assist you in any way that you need me to, to communicate between, you know, Mr. and Mrs. Rodriguez and the Luther, and the Lutheran church.
One other condition, the fence, we would prefer wood rather than vinyl.
Right.
To have that change in the site plan.
No problem. Not for nothing. I think, you know, PVC resin is actually costing more than, than wood these days. So, you know, not a bad trade-off.
Right. They don't last very well either.
Right, right. Are there any particular colors? Like if we were to whitewash cedar or something like that, would that be?
We, we don't do colors. We can paint.
Is white really a color?
White's a color.
Okay.
You can paint. The only color we don't like right now.
The only thing is we suggest you don't paint fences on the property line, on the neighbor's side of the property line, because you can't get there to repaint it if it needs to. But that's an existing fence. You're just putting it on your own property. It doesn't have to be painted. It can be painted if you so choose.
Okay.
No day glow lime.
Yes. And unfortunately, yes, well, black, but unfortunately we had no choice of that one either. So, um, all right. So did John made the motion? We have, Ryan, you have all the.
We need a second.
I'll second that.
You have the wood fence and everything down?
Yes.
Okay. A roll call vote. Michael Gee.
Aye.
Jeff Christensen.
Aye.
John Clark.
Aye.
David Miller. Aye.
So congratulations, Stephen. Just follow up with me tomorrow. There's just some minor particulars that need to be addressed, paper, paperwork wise, and then sort of next steps. Moving forward.
Sounds like you're going to give me another bill.
Uh, kind of, yes. Sort of the check that was submitted is a little out of date, is a little out of date. So we need to, we need to address that. And also just base, basically what, whatever's submitted needs to reflect what was discussed tonight. So the plans need to reflect what was discussed tonight. So the vinyl needs to be taken off. So the, you know, that sort of, that sort of discussion.
Okay. We'll put that, we'll put that on the plan for a final submission. Okay. Got it. And that has to be doctored by the engineer, right?
Right.
Okay. Well, gentlemen, thank you very much for your time and staying up late to get this done with me. I'm the last guy. So appreciate all your efforts and thank you very much for the approval.
Well, we had, we had minutes. First set of minutes in a while. We got some great comments from Jeff and some comments from Michael. Brian, you got those comments?
Yes. Unfortunately, Chair wasn't able to apply them and resend them.
We can say as, as amended. What, what was the date of the?
June 15th, not October 15th.
Okay, June 15th. All right. Now I have a motion to, that, thank you, Jeff, and thank you, Michael, for your, you know, proofreading and your comments. We have a motion to, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of June 15th as amended.
I'll second that.
Okay.
A roll call vote. Michael Gee.
Aye.
Chris Jensen.
Aye.
John Clark.
Aye.
David Miller. Aye. All right.
Wonderful.
Wonderful. Closed a lot of cases. Now, are we clear? The DBA meets in two days. I think we're clear on the.
I think so.
That you can present Colton with the clear recommendations.
Guess hopefully they'll be crystal.
We're still clear. And then, and then they'll be coming back. November 2nd.
Correct.
Lydia and Victoria.
Yes.
I guess we had a couple of people postponed.
Yes. The Unlimited Tomorrow will hopefully be back with us and then 30 Livingston. I will just have to make it clear that, you know, if there's another one, they're not going to get put back on the agenda until they can, they can meet the deadlines and so on and so forth.
And then next month, we can look at what it, the schedule looks like for December, because the meetings would be the 7th and the 21st. And we usually try not to meet.
That close to Christmas. Yes. We're all that close to the holidays.
Cause the night before Christmas. So we try not to meet on the 21st and just meet again after New Year's with the next caseload, whatever comes up over the holidays, which usually is not that much either, because everyone's on vacation.
And the other thing, you know, talking about this, the other thing is unless Albany acts, I believe the virtual option ends January 15th, 2022. So unless Albany acts, we would be returning to in-person in February.
Well, let's hope that happens and that, you know, the world is safe again. If things go well. Anybody have any other questions, comments? Jeff wrote up the notes of, thank you for that. Jeff brought up the notes of the meeting we had with Melody and Michael. And we're going to try to meet periodically every couple of months and share what's happening in town and the village. And we're meeting on the 4th of November. Public hearing to discuss the Brogan Center. And the mayor invited the planning board to come and listen.
Yeah, just to be clear, it's not a public hearing. It is a public comment. And so the only role that the elected officials have and that the planning board has is to listen.
Anything else? Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Have a good evening, all.
See you.
Good night.